You do come to order. Aren't you, please, call the roll?
Mr. Brockway?
Here.
Ms. Fieber?
Here.
Ms. Mangia?
Here.
Mrs. Morello?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Regan?
So this is a special meeting of the Riverside Board of Education. It is August 2nd. At this time, is there any public comment? Seeing there's no public comment, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Would the Board Secretary like to read the consent agenda, please?
Yep. The consent agenda is as follows. Item one, personnel report. One A, the appointment of Hauser Junior High School Assistant Principal, and one B, the lead nurse position. Oh, and, oh, there's, I'm sorry, there's more. No, there's not, that's it, right?
No, you're good.
That's it?
Yeah, yeah. You were quiet, so I thought I was wrong. Good.
In terms of the contract for the assistant principal, I think the salary is $75,000, which is what we paid our assistant principal last year.
Yes.
And there's nothing in the contract that's in any way different than the current.
Right, it's a standard administrative contract that essentially is the same contract that the other administrators on with just those details specifically different. And I know we've talked about this, this assistant principal and the technology, instructional technology coordinator are both 10-month positions, which is different than the other administrators.
At this time, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
It's moved.
Second?
Are there any items that anyone would like to take off the consent agenda for further discussion? If there's no items anyone would like to take off, then Margie, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fieber?
Hi.
Mr. Brockway?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Ms. Mangia?
Aye.
Ms. Morello?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next item is the motion to approve a resolution to purchase real estate at 92 Repton Road. Would the Board Secretary please like to read the resolution in its entirety?
I would like to do that, yes. We get to talk a lot today. The resolution approving real estate purchase for 92 Repton Road, Riverside, Illinois. Whereas the Board of Education, the Board of Riverside School District Number 96, Cook County, Illinois, the school district, has reviewed a proposed form of real estate purchase and sale agreement, the contract, for the purchase by the school district of that certain real estate consisting of an approximately 1,700 square foot, single-family residence -- 1,700 square foot, single-family residence situated on a 16,933 square foot parcel located at 92 Repton Road in Riverside, Cook County, Illinois, with a permanent index number. Shall I read that as well?
If you like.
Yeah. 1-5-2-5-3-0-3-0-2-1-0-0-0-0, the real estate, a copy of which is attached hereto as Exhibit A. And whereas, the Board has determined that it is in the best interests of the school district to acquire the real estate pursuant to the terms of the contract. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Riverside School District Number 96, Cook County, Illinois, as follows. One, the contract is hereby approved in substantially the form reviewed by the Board, together with such minor modifications as are deemed necessary by the Board's attorneys and administrators to protect the best interests of the school district. Two, the President and Secretary are hereby authorized to sign and enter into the contract on behalf of the school district. Three, the President, Secretary, Superintendent, and Attorneys for the Board are hereby authorized to take all action necessary or appropriate to complete the acquisition of the real estate in accordance with the terms of the contract in this resolution. Item four, this resolution shall be in full force and affect upon its adoption.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I was thinking it's no further.
Just for further clarification, the purchase price of the real estate is $343,822.18. At this time, is there a motion to approve the resolution to purchase this real estate as presented?
Second?
Is there any discussion about this? And I think considering this is a substantial purchase, it might be beneficial if we went around the table and people gave their thoughts about their, about this purchase. So I don't know if we want to start with any volunteers on which side to start on, or in the middle, or?
I think it's a great opportunity for us. My child went to Ames School for four years, and that's a tight site, and I've had my eye on that property for some time now. So I'm glad it's come to us, and I think it's going to be well-used.
Thank you.
Yeah, I echo Randy's sentiment. I'm excited about the idea that we can have a little more room to use in fulfilling the strategic plan of looking at facilities and trying to get more space, especially at Ames. I'm really excited about this opportunity.
Yes, I totally agree with what you've said. It's not often that an adjacent property comes, becomes available to a school, so I'm excited to hear the proposals for use and hopefully get some breathing room for a few classrooms or whatever we want to do with it. There's really a lot of possibilities, so I'm excited to hear those.
I echo everything said by Randy, and Sherry, and Linda. I recommend that the property, after it closes, that we demolish it as soon as possible. I believe having a vacant piece of property is a potential problem for the district. I actually have a list, somebody squatted one of the houses on our block when it was vacant, so, and with children, so that would, you know, I hope we follow through and do that. And then, I didn't notice, do we know what the closing date might be or the projected?
We have to go ahead and set that once this is all approved, then we start working with our attorneys in the title company and getting that all.
Were you anticipating September was the, was your anticipation sometime, hopefully, or?
Yeah, I mean, in anticipation of this, I know RS Dalianis is ready to say, send it to me, and we will get this moving, moving quickly.
But I'm definitely glad this came to, this opportunity came to us and that we seized it, because I think it will make a big difference in the experience children have in school. In a, as well.
I think that, I echo what all of you have said, but I think that it may not just benefit Ames, I think it'll benefit the entire district. I think that I have my own ideas, and I'm very excited about it. Not that necessarily has to be my ideas, but I think it could take the burden off the rest of the district. So this is great, we're finally moving forward with this. I think the elevator was a big step for a lot of reasons, and I, before, aren't towards our abilities, and I think this is also going to be much towards that goal.
Right.
So I'm excited to start hearing ideas and talking about plans for that.
A lot of flexibility it gives us.
Right, Mary Rose makes a very good point, yeah, we should probably demolish it as a.
I totally agree.
Right.
I agree with all of the comments people have made, I think that, I think you're right, it's the optionality, this is a tremendous amount of optionality, because currently, we don't have any places to build anything, even if we wanted to, at any of our current schools. So it gives us optionality. I agree with your point as well, this, we're relieved overcrowding at Ames if we decide, depending on what we decide to do, which remains to be seen. But that will also, because the overflow at Ames, the overcrowding at Ames spills over into Central and Blithe. The other thing, and I think I agree with Randy's comments, if you had to choose one lot in the entire district to buy?
It would be that one.
It would be that one, because it's perfect. It's a large lot, it's next to Ames, which is arguably the most overcrowded school, and the purchase price is not much more than the bare of land value, because the house was not, you know, it's not a million-dollar house, fortunately. I think one of the comments is that, I presume this is going to be studied extensively by the administration, we're not going to be doing anything hastily, other than knocking the house down. Be a lot of input from the community, in terms of what, you know, what we should be doing on this property. So it'll be plenty of time for people to participate in that. And it has to be a district-wide, you know, endeavor, not just Ames-wide. Final thing I'd like to say is that I think this board has been very frugal. We've saved a lot of money in our, in our construction projects over the last couple of years. We waited last year on the paving project at Hauser and Central, and we saved ourselves a couple hundred thousand dollars to get several, you know, by getting multiple bids. We saved a lot of money on the Blithe windows, because we pursued the retrofitting approach as opposed to buying new, we'd probably save $500 to $1 million there. So we saved a lot of money over the last year, but now we're having an opportunity to actually invest some of that money in a way that will benefit the entire district, in our view. So I think we're all in agreement, this is a great, great step, and I don't want to speak for Rich, but I, he's not here today, but I think this is his view as well. So with that said, are there any further comments about the, okay. Margie, would you please call the roll to approve the resolution to purchase real estate at 92 Repton as presented?
Ms. Mangia?
Aye.
Mr. Brockway?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mrs. Morello?
Aye.
Ms. Fieber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Yay!
Worth a clap.
Exciting.
So there's a statement that the Board of Education would like to make concerning this acquisition. The Board of Education is pleased to inform the Riverside District 96 community that has approved the contract to purchase the property located at 92 Repton Road, directly east of and adjacent to the Ames School. The Repton property is approximately 17,000 square foot, or a .4 acre parcel, that will be incorporated into the Ames School campus. The existing house on the property, which is currently vacant and has been the subject of foreclosure proceedings, will be demolished. The addition of this property to the Ames School campus will allow for greater educational and recreational opportunities for students. The purchase of this property will allow the district to address the space constraints at Ames with potential positive effects district-wide. The Board will be conducting an in-depth analysis of the space and facility needs throughout the district. Community stakeholders are encouraged to participate in the process of examining the next steps. If you're interested in participating, please contact Superintendent Martha Ryan-Toy at ryan-toy-m@district96.org. You can find that on the website, or call District Office at 708-447-7005. The Board is paying $343,822.18 to purchase this property, and expects to close on this purchase by early September. I should comment about the odd purchase price. We had an appraiser come in and appraise the property. He came in and his initial appraisal value was, I believe, either $380,000 or $375,000. However, he did not examine the interior of the building, so we asked him, we said, "You can't appraise the property properly without looking at the inside of the building." So we asked him to go back and do it again. He went back and he looked at it, and he came in with a new appraisal value of $330,000. So that was our sort of benchmark number, sort of fair, estimated fair value. Our new superintendent then entered into negotiations with the owner and settled on this purchase price, which essentially pays off his mortgage. He's now in foreclosure proceedings, so we paid a couple percent, three or four percent more than our appraised value, but we avoided a lot of time and legal expenses if we had had to, you know, get involved in that kind of legal proceeding. So overall, I think it was a very good, very good purchase price. So did you have anything that you wanted to add to that, Martha?
I'll just echo really everything the Board has already shared. I think it's an exciting opportunity for the district, and it very much fits with the strategic plan, and I agree, Rachel, it's really about a district-wide analysis of facilities overall, and then figuring out how we will use this property moving forward. I'm excited.
Any further comments? Then at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to the committee meetings. The first committee is Sherry's Education Committee.
Okay, today, as per usual, most of the time, we have Merrill Brownlow will be talking about a few things, some summer things have been going on, and also, one thing we hadn't heard too much about, and I'm excited to talk about, which is kind of benchmarking how far we've come through strategic plan processes for curriculum, and also talking about a timeline for our committee.
So I wanted to provide to an update. You'll hear a lot more as we head into the fall on some of these topics, but this is just a brief update for August, and then we've also laid out a topical suggestive list for committee members with respect to education, so we make sure we hit on everything throughout the year. So the first paragraph in your memo really highlighted what's coming up in August, which are institute days, and we're very excited about our theme, which is going to be assessment literacy, which really overarches all the work we're doing with that curriculum standards and instruction alignment that we've been talking about through our strategic plan. So this is the next step. I know we've spoken a lot about getting some common assessments in place across the district, so we really have things that reflect what's happening in the classroom. So that's really what this is all about. We took a group of teachers to a workshop in July with all of the principals, so there was one person from each of the elementarys and two from the middle school, and that was a really team-oriented effort to really look at what the possibilities are with the time that we're going to have this year. So that will be our theme moving into next year, will be assessment literacy, all throughout our professional development, together. In addition to that, we have done a lot this summer, entering into the next year. So if you look, I kind of bring it around the strategic plan. Under goal number one, which is our curriculum alignment goal, we spent June kind of looking at our RTI data, and you'll hear all about our achievement updates with all of our data once all, what the PARC scores are in, and we can look at everything collectively for a bigger achievement, broader profile, but I wanted to share the success of RTI in general, which was we had 118 students exit math services over the course of the year, so either from fall to winter, or winter to spring, or fall to spring, depending on when they exited, but completely isolated out 118 students in math and 120 in reading. So that's really exciting, and we're continuing to refine this process, so hopefully we'll even have more success as we move forward, but for our first time really leveling the services, it was really pretty effective.
Having some exhibits that'll kind of show us the progression?
Yes, in October, when we do the student achievement review of all of 15-16, you'll have all the details, the doublets and details, and you'll see sort of how many students we're continuing to support, where we've been, where we've come, those graphic triangles that I do that show you the percentages that are, that are different tiers of all of that. So this was just like a little snippet, stay tuned, we're pretty excited. Then also this summer, we had 26 teachers working in June on ELA curriculum and looking at product, really, to help us better align with the Common Core standards, and we're continuing that work. They prioritize the standards, they have some really nice curriculum documents now that we're going to be turning around to everybody. And we've isolated some resources and vocabulary and writing that we're going to begin to possibly look at for piloting purposes, and we're still doing the work embedding the reading resources, so that'll continue into the early fall, and expecting to report back with some piloting updates probably September. And then, science, we also had teachers examining the standards, and you know that middle schools already started on their journey, so they are going to pilot, officially pilot. I quested, they did one unit last year, they're going to officially pilot several units over the course of this year in grades six through eight, and the K-5 teachers began examining those standards and unpacking them. So you'll hear more about those opportunities for the second half of 16-17. In social studies, we had our middle school teachers begin to unpack those new standards, which were just approved at the end of last year, and they are each going to be piloting a theme-based unit, which is what the new standards really lend themselves to, so they'll be very inquiry-based. So I gave you an example at each of the grade levels of what a unit might look like, so I'll just read one example, so the public can kind of care how this is being shaped. So, for example, in grade eight, the theme is going to be America Transformed. How did the desire for growth affect the transformation of America during the late 19th and early 20th century? So students will look at all kinds of historical context that will lend itself to that theme, and they'll look at the growth and expansion of the U.S. and how that changed over time. So rather than just teaching less word expansion, we're going to be looking at how that fits into the bigger picture of how America's changed, so you get the idea. In K-8, for the first time ever, our PE teachers sat down with a fifth-grade teacher and re-looked at PE and health, yay! And they were so excited that someone was helping them to pay attention to the shifts. So some of the big shifts were, they really re-looked at the health curriculum to do a better alignment, we modified some of the body system units, so we have more to continue on now, particularly the fifth, sixth grade, we talked about this last year, the period of puberty and endocrine system education, so we're going to scaffold that more to have a two-year scaffolding, you know I like that word, but, a two-year scaffolding of the puberty-endocrine system curriculum. So next year, sixth graders, they're up to speed, so they won't have to repeat that this year, but fifth grade will do puberty, and then that group next year will go more in-depth with endocrine, we'll get an introduction of that followed-up in sixth. And then, we also looked at an increase on the fitness standards, so that we're looking at lifelong fitness for students, and they created all new assessments, none of which are based on how well they do something, but how much they grow in learning their skills. So that'll really be a big shift. No one, you know, not everyone's a superstar athlete, so you really want to look at their improvement in that, in those sports, rather than a vast, very low level of skill.
Right.
So they're very excited about that. And then, the health units at sixth through eighth were concerned, because if you remember last year, when we got into compliance with the health instructions, we did a six-week unit in the middle, we broke that now up into two-week rotations. So we won't be out of physical activity for six straight weeks this year, so that'll be better for the students, especially. And then, lastly, they wanted you to know that they're really excited, because they're also looking at how to embed cooperative thinking and critical thinking into PE, and it's not just for the classroom, so.
Awesome.
Good, so. Lastly, I wanted to share with you that because of your annual report that the district chose to send out, I had a phone call from a community member with no students in the district with respect to curriculum instruction, and a community member called to ask me about the middle school math curriculum specifically, which was mentioned in the annual report. So that was an awesome conversation to be able to have with a community member, and to help that person to understand what we decided to adopt, why we decided to adopt it. And she felt that I answered her questions very thoroughly, and she had none after that, but it was nice to see a phone call come in from someone without students.
Yeah, great.
They read, they actually read it?
They actually read it.
Fantastic.
Other than that, I just shared that outline, know that all the topics throughout the year are subject to change based on obviously timely things that might happen that you might want to know about or I may have to share. And so in September, you can look forward to a professional development recap from August, and also from where we're going to be heading going forward. And then October, specialized programs, that may be, that one in November may flip-flop, depending on when we get score reports.
Instructional technology.
Right, right. So I have instructional technology for October.
Merrill, where does Safe Solution fit in in this timeline? Are we reviewing?
So, we're not renewing the actual contract, we don't need to. We own all this product that we uploaded, so we just downloaded, we dumped back everything that we owned from there, so we're continuing right now with what we aligned to Safe Solution, and we own it, we have it housed locally now, so we don't need the technology contract to maintain that until we look for replacement resources.
Okay.
So status quo, but we have it now, and we're in the process of reviewing things that we might pilot to replace what was aligned.
Okay. Is it fair to say that we are now Common Core aligned, or?
We are definitely Common Core aligned, but we, I don't know if we have the right resources in terms of the rigor of our students. So we're looking at really what do we have at the core, because we know we're higher performing, and we need to make sure that the product, so I like to call it product, our curriculum is aligned, but the product that we're using, we want to make sure we're using the right product with respect to what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
The question about the first part here on the assessments?
Yes.
And you could say that you did some professional development about assessment literacy, and I really like what you, what you wrote here, is that you, basically, the primary goal is not doing well in the test, but basically instilling a love of learning and focusing on the whole child. I do have a question, though, which is, seems to be a topical question, which is the number of tests that students take in public schools, standardized tests, as compared to good private schools. And there seems to be some belief that we take many more standardized tests from the public schools than is common in good private schools. And the question is, I guess, my question is, is that true? Can we look at that? And do we, all the tests we take, I know we take a lot of standardized tests, the math, and the COGAD, and the PARC, and this and that. Maybe if you could give us at some point, I'm not saying right now, but somewhere down the line, an explanation of what they're, why, what they're used for, and why, why is it that if it's true, you look at a good private school, like the Lab School, for example, why aren't they not taking all of these standardized tests that we're doing in the public schools? Is that a question of mandates, or a question of, again, I'm not saying I want to answer them now, but?
Yeah, I don't have an antebre, like, every private school's profile may be different in terms of what they're using and how they're using it. So, but from, I'll tell you that what I do know, and I won't speak at all things that I'm not sure about, one thing I do know is many of the private schools do use some kind of cognitive screener, which is what we use in terms of the COGAD. They might use Terranova, or Iowa. Many of them do, in fact, a lot of them require that kind of screening for entrance. So, but that does vary, school to school to school. The only standardized test, they're not required to administer PAR, that's state-referenced, that's the other standardized test that we're giving. And then, the last standardized test that we're using at a large-scale level is math, and we're using that right now for growth. They may have their own assessment systems established to measure that, and that's what we're moving more towards, but the way we're using that right now is to measure achievement and growth, and we use it as an indicator in several places. And the last assessment, the other assessments we're using from a standardized perspective are things for RTI to determine where to place students in support services, and many private schools don't have the capacity to cover those levels of support services, so they may not need those kind of indicators to look at where to place your services. But we can look into certainly what they use and how they use it, why they use it, as compared to what we're doing.
I'd be very curious to see that.
Your own question for you, did I hear you say that the private schools have to administer PAR, because it's a state?
No, opposite.
Oh, even though it is a, it's a state funding?
Yeah, they're not, correct, they're not state-funded.
They don't have to, and typically, I assume they don't, actually.
No.
They're allowed to?
Yeah.
I don't even think they put up into it, right?
It's all right.
Unless, yeah, they could, maybe, well, I was going to say, now that PAR's its own better, they might be able to private, just like, purchase it privately, I don't know, but they're not required.
And then, in November, where it's just a student achievement review, would that be a review of all the results from the tests taken in the spring?
From 15-16, so we'll have all the finalized PAR data, we'll have all the math reports, we'll have all, I don't want to do everything piecemeal, we'll have the RTI data, we'll have the five essential, so we can look at a full achievement program.
Sounds good.
Makes more sense, though.
With the, with the new contract, teacher's contract, can you compare the professional development that will be occurring in August of this year for teachers as opposed to last year?
So what we did last year, we added those two additional institute days last year, and we ended up putting them in January and June. This year, we took the June one and put it at the start of the year, so we could have a bigger impact on teaching and learning throughout the year, rather than waiting till the end of the year to reflect back. This year, because we didn't settle the contract until after the start of the year, we ended up putting it at the end of the year as a reflective day, but now we get to be more proactive with that particular day, so we front-loaded three institute days for the start of the year.
So the difference between last year and this year will be three?
Well, I should have to say, on the time, because we have last year, they're just positioned differently.
Yes, and how about in August?
So in August, we'll have one extra day.
One extra day, that's my question, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else?
The question, I heard from my daughter and her classmates about the PE health thing last year, the six weeks of inactivity in the wintertime and so forth.
That's why we cracked it.
Yeah. Now, so how's that going to be different this year?
It's going to be adjusted two weeks at a time, three times throughout the year, so once each trimester.
Ah, okay.
You'll have a two-week health unit. Can't really shorten it any more than that, because it's a unit of instruction that they're delivering within the two weeks, but we were able to break it apart.
And is that still in the spirit of the requirements from the state of Illinois?
Correct, we're still trying to meet the compliance of the health, but actually, there's more health requirements than there was before, but we're able to still do it in the six weeks, we've just combined two states.
How about the PE part of it? Are we still?
Yeah, oh, we're in compliance. We have a waiver for daily PE because of our facility.
So, you have the waiver?
That was part of, the part of the waiver was the health instruction in there, as well as the K-4 facilities, where they don't have daily PE. So we have a two-year waiver requirement, or waiver for daily PE.
And that is facility-led?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the facility issue that we?
Correct.
We can be?
I, well, we'll have to, it's also?
That's our last of considerations, for sure.
Yeah, it's something we can look at, for sure, because there's a capacity level in some of the gymnasiums, and to have daily PE, you'd have to double classes.
Yeah.
Wow.
But nevertheless, the state of Illinois doesn't require daily PE, right?
Currently, that is correct. I know that is under review, but yes.
Yes, okay.
We do have, we do have, or we do not have daily recess? What about recess?[1777.94]
We do have daily recess at K through five.
And that, in what fraction of the time do you think the kids are outside running around?
It's about 25 minutes.
But are, I mean, how many days out of the year, what fraction of the days of the year are they actually outside running around as opposed to?
Weather-dependent. You know, I would say most days, September, October, November, even December. I mean, you might go through a period of a week or two where it's way too cold to go out, or if there's snow, we send them out. As long as it's about 10 degrees, wind chill and 10 degrees Fahrenheit, they're out. Or if it's not pouring rain, they're out. Okay? Anything else? Okay, thank you. We know where to find you.
Thanks, Meryl.
So I think the next committee meeting is finance, and Rich is not here tonight, so Martha said she would update us on the finance and facilities reports.
Yeah. I know, Rich is not here, nor is David Sellers. So you all have in your packet, and I'll go over it a bit, so it's clear to the public also, is an update from our architects from Leggett about the three main projects going on, the Hauser elevator, the Central Hauser paving, and then the Blight Park windows. The elevator, everything is, the good news is everything is moving on schedule, and as David Sellers says, on schedule and under budget, which is always the good news for the school board and for the community. But the project is really progressing in the Hauser elevator. I went over and looked at it today, so you can kind of see that the guides are all in, and the area's starting to look a little more cleaned up than it was. So we are, again, as it says here in the report, nearing completion, and they are looking at, August 18th is that substantial completion date. My understanding is it won't be fully operational, though. It's completed, but then it's not fully operational.
It also says, like, the elevator is scheduled for delivery the week of the 31st. Does that mean August 31st? I'm assuming it's not July 31st since that already, so I'm assuming the construction will be done, and then once the elevator is delivered, it will be?
The elevator is here, and the elevator is like a series of guides and hydraulics, and then the actual cab. So I believe they meant July 31st. Because it came last weekend, so that, yeah, that would make sense, yeah.
Oh, okay, great.
So the idea is to get it all sort of buttoned up, closed up, so that it's a safe space even for kids just to be in the area. But then in terms of the actual elevator operation, there are some additional steps to that, that will take some additional days. But it won't be a hazardous area for kids, certainly, and then it'll become a fully functional elevator very soon after that.
Will that be, just a question, would that be any students who are going to be needing the use of the elevator, will that create any situation in the first few weeks of school if they can't use it?
I will look into that, because I'm not sure, and I'm not sure then in terms of that actual usable date and what that means if it's?
Because I mean, I don't know how that affects.
I don't know for sure, but I don't think they remove the existing ones.
Right, you're right.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Any other questions about that? I know even though with that delay for the asbestos abatement, we're still looking to be moving on time, so that's great. Then the Central Hauser paving, and actually, it includes some paving at Hollywood, too, which is all done, and the striping is not done yet at Hollywood, and the striping is not done outside here yet either. I know today I was able to walk on it, so it looks good, it looks finished, other than it's not, you know, fully usable and it's not striped yet. The other thing that is in this particular update about the Central Hauser paving that I just wanted to bring to the board's attention is this issue of the crushed stone path that, as I talked to really several of you in preparation for the meeting, it's a little unclear to me how much that was discussed at the board table. It's an idea that had been presented, I believe initially by the wellness committee. The idea is this crushed stone path would move from the, kind of behind the ball field, and you can tell there's kind of a rut where kids must either walk or bring their bikes up along and then get into the parking lot where the bike racks are going to go, right? But this is certainly something that the board doesn't really need to decide. We're at a, you know, committee the whole meeting, so in terms of taking action, I'm not sure, really, it's a board action item, but certainly a board consensus item. So we feel it's something that we could wait on. I know there was a sense, kind of initially, that the papers are here and they could do it ASAP if that was something that the board really desired, but that was kind of my own learning, figuring out how much of this had already been discussed, and that's unclear to me.
I think that's accurate, right?
Right, I don't think we discussed, we heard a presentation, I don't think we actually discussed what we wanted to do with that or what the administration wanted to recommend, so I guess we're kind of waiting to hear, you know, what the analysis of the administration is.
Where is this pavement?
It's on the north side of the ball field.
Okay.
The kids walk kind of around on the grass.
From Aitkinside through, so if you live in Aitkinside, and that's part of the little-
There's a little opening.
Cut through the lot, yeah.
I have a picture of the space.
There you go.
It almost looks like maybe it was once a stone path or a little more clear, and it's a little more than dirt, but not much more than dirt.
My question I had was the cost. Why, is it just that it needs to be leveled and that's just the cost of the labor? Because it seemed a little bit high, but I don't know the cost of the labor for a lot of it.
Right, and then it's labor, and it's sort of, they'd want to dig it down some and then fill it in with crushed stones. So it's both, I think, the materials and the labor.
Do you think that, like, the PE coaches need to be consulted about this? Because I imagine the kids run around there, so what the material should be, should it be crushed stone, should it be pavement, should it be something else? Who knows? I mean, I'm wondering if, like, there should be more staff?
Right, some consultation, and I don't know, Meryl, you may know, but even walking outside today, I've mostly seen the schools empty, so I don't know kind of what the typical pathways are and that sort of thing.
They use those fields, too, for PE, and they do run, they run laps when they're not running the neighborhood. I usually hear before kids, so I haven't seen them actually coming and going.
I would see, I've noticed a fair amount of kids duck, because a lot of the kids that are walking from that side of town, instead of going all the way past, they duck in, and I think the reason we mention it is because a lot of the traffic that's in the parking lot gets crazy, and all these students are coming in that way. So I think it was an idea of getting kids a more clear path, like, well-marked, where it looked, you're supposed to walk here, as opposed to-
And it wasn't a mud pit in the fall.
But the only issue with that then, too, is, you know, people who are dropping their kids off wouldn't drop right there because there's no.
It's more for bikers and walkers.
Right, right. So, I mean, I'm not sure how much it alleviates kids walking through the parking lot or not, but I-
I want to hear from the staff from Hauser and Central and see how they use it.
Yeah. That'd be helpful.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Sure, and we can do that, and we can do that really pretty quickly, I think after the start of the school year, we can bring it back by September, October.
And this seems like a fairly minor project that can be done by any landscaping, any contractor landscaping firm could presumably do this, we could bid it out if we-
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, too.
So we'll wait, we'll gather more information from PE and just even from April, and I know Jason, I'm sure, would still be, you know, very comfortable weighing in on the rest of the teacher group, but that idea, we don't want to make, take up too much space or too little if we have that opportunity, so.
Right, and I mean, it might even be good in the beginning of the school year to see how much is being used. Like, is it something that would create more usage, or is it a handful of kids? I don't, I mean, I don't really-
Put a camera out there and just-
We could actually ask the kids.
Yeah. I actually talked to my son about it today, and he, his opinion was like, I can walk on grass. So I don't really know.
I just might just walk.
Yeah, I know, I know. But I don't think he understood the fact of trying to make it a more visible walking path to encourage more kids to walk there, but, you know.
But they're using it for gym activities. Like, this is not good, this is not good material for running on.
No.
So I don't know if they do it, because I know trains run around.
I was thinking about that a little, I was thinking that if you fall on stone, it's going to hurt more than if you fall on mud. But you're more likely to fall on mud. It's obvious, you know what I'm saying? It's like, plus they're running on the pavement anyway, so.
Let's just ask them.
Yeah, so we'll ask some key stakeholders, as they say, and come back on this.
I don't have any expertise on that area.
And then the last one is the Blight Park windows, and I don't know if people have had a chance to go by, there's actually some pictures that the architect put in the packet, and it really does look nice, and we are very, very near completion on that, so it's exciting. We want all our projects to be almost done, and school's going to start very soon, but things are moving on schedule, so.
The windows look fantastic.
They do.
Yeah.
Martha, I had a question about the change order for the paving. Just the, did we get a presentation by the architect or contractor as to the extent of materials and labor that was involved in determining that price?
Right, so I have, and I can share that with the entire board. I know, Randy, you had asked that question before the meeting, too, so thank you. And I did contact David Sellers, and he has the documentation of the change order and then the actual amounts of gravel that were added and the specific, you know, the specifications for all of that. So I can share that with the entire board. He also, I'm sorry, you just wanted to reiterate that the proof roll is done by an independent, it's not the paving company, they bring an independent person to do it. It was 30% of the paving area that failed the proof roll, it wasn't the entire area.
Sure.
And then they had to, what, excavate deeper and add more gravel.
Yeah.
Have we successfully completed the final proof roll, though?
Oh, I think the paving is done now.
The paving's down, so, yeah, I assume-
I think he'd mentioned that we still had to-
They did, I know what David Sellers had mentioned last time, is once they did the test and we passed it, they would start paving immediately.
So as long as they're going, then it must have passed.
But I think your question was, was there a sufficient level of scrutiny to the change and the why?
Change order.
Yeah.
Oh, and the cost associated with it.
The number, you know, yeah, because traditionally, a contractor would prepare his proposal for a change order, and it would be reviewed by our consulting architect. And there may be some negotiation back and forth about quantities and cost, unit costs and that sort of thing. And that's how it's vetted, you know, as opposed to just contractor proposing a number and you take it or leave it, sort of thing. So that's my only concern, is that we're being prudent with, and careful with our money.
So the idea, maybe if we could get the, basically, to the details about how many square feet needed the extra gravel, how much extra gravel was put in, how much was taken out, you know, and then we could, what the cost of each truckload, and then we could sort of see if that all makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, it should all add up.
Right, and I have that additional, just from this afternoon, additional documentation evidence that David got from the paving company and through the architect, so I can share that, and-
Yeah, this is at Singapore.
Yeah.
This is Iowa Basic Skill Map.
Martha, we were talking a little bit earlier about the work that Mash Nayer did to the district two years ago, and he did negotiate our change orders for us. Yeah, I'm not saying that we don't have, you know, David can't do that as well, but that was one of the services he performed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Then we come to our third committee, which is the policy committee. Oh, did you have anything?
Yeah, I was going to say, we do want to add one other facilities item in.
Yep.
And that was, the board has the attachment of the letter that was sent to the Hollywood Citizens Association in regard to a preliminary offer, a letter of interest in terms of purchasing the playground property area from the HCA. And this is something that, actually, Bob Skolnick had shared that had become, that had been made, he had been made aware of. And so even though initially our idea was that this would, as a real estate item, could be certainly a board confidential item, but we agreed that the board was also comfortable sharing this, and that I think this is an offer that we feel is, you know, very student-centered, very child-centered, and very much intended to be very much in the spirit of public cooperation around really just resolving the clarity around the playground space and this goal that I know has been a part of board conversation certainly before I joined all of you around improving the playground, and yet some kind of uncertainty or sense of learyness in terms of improving space that we don't really own. So we did send a letter on to the Hollywood Citizens Association, and they are going to consider it at their September board meeting. And there was actually an article in The Landmark today about this, so I wanted to make sure that it was clear to all the board, if you hadn't already seen or heard about it, that we are, we are sort of putting the light on this effort that the board's making, and we believe, again, that it's really positive, well-intentioned, and we will see what the Hollywood Citizens Association has to share with us in September.
Just to add two details, the purchase was for just the playground, $4,750 square feet, and the purchase offer was $25,000, which, again, was the appraised value for that property.
So Martha, you had a meeting with their board prior to this offer being made. Can you review that meeting?
Sure, I mean, that meeting, it was, Rich Regan also joined me, and the meeting was really kind of a get acquainted, and we talked through some of the history of the Hollywood Playground, and actually, the history of the Hollywood Citizens Association, and how they use that building. And one of the things they shared with me is that that building is used for a lot of different things. It's scouting and community meetings and dance classes, and it sounds like that meeting has, that meeting space, it's a fair amount of community use. We talked specifically about the playground and kind of when at different times, and it almost seems like about a 30-year history that we kind of recounted, and who improved it, when, and sort of with what dollars, and some of how that's perhaps been a frustration and for the community and in the area. And so, again, it was really just intended to kind of gather that history, have that conversation, be clear about that. The Hollywood Citizens Association did share that they really don't want to sell their property, you know, they don't want to sell the Hollywood Citizens Association house, they did not want to sell the playground. And as you all know from my letter, I really shared that I understood they did not have an intention to sell, but I was only kind of reaching out with this idea that perhaps they would reconsider that about the playground area specifically. So we'll wait and see.
Thank you.
Any other questions about that topic? Thank you, Martha. Then the final committee is the policy committee. Linda, do you have any updates about the policy?
Yes, Martha and I received the press 92 updates, and we will be reviewing them and presenting them at most likely the September committee, the whole meeting. But just our update is that we received it.
And our understanding is the press will now be updating three times a year with the updated policies.
Yeah.
Any questions about the, any policy issues? Anyone have any questions or?
Just, I just noticed that the press update wasn't attached to the agenda, so.
Yeah, this is just more so, I noticed you that we have it, that we got it, and we will be discussing it at the next meeting, so.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
I think, anyway, we're all on the mailing list anyway.
I noticed that, I don't think, I looked at the mailing list, and I didn't see Sheri's name, and I didn't see, someone else didn't seem to be on there. Maybe it was Rachel, I don't know if you get the press updates. It sounded like everyone except for two people.
I don't think I've been getting them.
So maybe you should, maybe you should talk to Margie and make sure that you're on the press update list, and maybe Margie, I don't know, could check and see that everyone's on there.
There was one issue a few years ago that came up, a policy issue that was discussed, and I think was kicked around a little bit, and I don't know if it was ever addressed by our board, but I would ask that it be, if it has been, I'd like to know. And that would be considering, say, the employment, say, a teacher employing another teacher, or a District 96 employee hiring another District 96 employee, and the difficulty that that created three years ago was significant. I don't know if that has been addressed fully, or at all.
I know that we had wanted to, but whether it actually happened, and also some clarity around tutoring, whether that should be done on the district property or not, and whether that's appropriate for a teacher to be doing their own tutoring. It was all part of that same conversation.
Sure.
Whether, again, it's appropriate for somebody to hire a fellow employee to, like, as a babysitter.
Forget conflicts of interest of some kind, conflicts of interest.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay.
Yeah, and also, kind of widening that a little bit, was whether people, teachers or anybody should be using district property to essentially conduct a personal business, because that has happened, and they're not paying rent.[1686.82]
Something other than tutoring, or you mean tutoring?
That, that's a personal business. But there was also, I think it was the spin class, and then somebody running a basketball camp.
Okay.
And again, all the paperwork wasn't getting, you know, the insurance and all of that, and whether, you know, again, they're running, it's a personal business, they're running on district property, and how we want to manage that.
I think Dr. Paul identified those two, the two, two activities and put a stop to them when he found out about them.
But I guess the thing, but I guess the thing is whether we want to put it in the policy.
I, I feel like it is in the, it is maybe not as clear as we need to be, but I do believe that is in the policy, it just wasn't being followed. But we can certainly look into that.
We can pull it back out and take a look.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I don't know which policy it is.
I feel like when I talked to Dr. Paul about that, it mentioned we revisited the policy together, and it was clear that that was stated in the policy, but I could also be miss, you know, like, it'd be good to take a second.
Yeah, if you, if you just could, if you're going to look at it, just shoot us the policy number, you know, anybody who's interested.
I want to make sure it's clear in every instance, as the one that I started with, which is the one that was creating the legal issue between the board and the employee.